Welcome everybody to our regular Thursday, October twenty second. On a select board meeting at seven P M. We're gonna need to approve the agenda. Approve the minutes of ten five, ten seven, ten eight, and ten nine. Warrants, the board liaison report, treasure report. New business, discuss appointments of the deputy health officer, award fuel bid. Execute, I can't see, oh my god. Execute um contracts for the better roads grant. B R O eight one two for eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. T H four four for chrome road. Approval of excess weight permit for Tatro trucking LLC. Public comment will be available by Zoom. Um we'll have an executive session for legal relating to the Green Mountain racetrack if necessary. Could I please have an approval of the agenda? Any discussion? Um Jamie? Ronnie or Angie I. Okay, approval of minutes of ten five. I have a motion.
Uh motion to approve.
I have a second. Any discussion? Let everybody read them. Hey, can I have an approval? Aye, alright. Approval of minutes for ten seven, you have a motion? Any discussion? Jamie? Approval of minutes of ten eight? A second? Any discussion? Jamie? Minutes of ten nine? A second? Any discussion? Jamie? Angie I. Okay, warrants? I just had them, what did I do with them? Oh boy. Payroll ending ten eleven for eight thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Payroll ending ten eighteen for nine thousand sixty-two dollars and four cents. Accounts payable for ten sixteen in the amount of twenty-seven thousand one seventy-six seventy-eight. Three thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents Bank of Bennington tax refund. Benton County Sheriff, four thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Town office project work, the engineer was for um. Gun throw and associates for ten thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. West Oil for eighty-nine, I R S two thousand seven sixty-sixty-eight. Accounts payable, ten twenty-three for a hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. Black River Design is the town of office project for two thousand seven thirty-eight seventy-nine. A T and T for one thousand two forty-nine ninety-eight. The cella wastes water, excuse me, waste management treatment, three thousand one twenty-nine seventy-seven. M V P healthcare insurance for seven thousand eight forty-five twenty. U S bank sewer bond payment for nine thousand, excuse me, ninety-four thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-eight cents. The T S landfill mediation was for sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-nine cents. So that is for one hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. Can I entertain a motion please?
Motion to approve.
Second? Okay, Jamie? Bob? Ronnie? Angie I. Okay. Board liaison, Rebecca, are you there?
I am, okay, I will try to be very quick tonight because most of it is just repetitive, small updates, so. As far as grants are concerned, um unfortunately, we were not approved for the cultural facilities grant. That was the, I think it was about a sixteen thousand dollars, it was for the um the schoolhouse portion of the new town hall project, so. Only fifty percent of the applicants received awards and I did in the interim develop a nice little relationship with the grant manager. So she's going to be providing me feedback on our application, which is going to be really helpful for future proposals. Um it's, it was from the Vermont Arts Council and I planned to come up with something for the next round of grants. I was thinking, you know, there's a lot of ideas that we could have for things that we could uh apply for a grant for in that regard. Um the elder grant, I increased the ask on that to about twenty-six thousand approximately. That was based on the advice of one of the grant managers that I spoke with, he said it's better to ask for a little more and not use it. Um so Chuck has initiated the purchase of the extra laptops and the video conferencing equipment as we just saw. Um so we have a very large monitor sitting in there, I guess. Um and Linda is handling the cellphone purchases. So I'm writing all the language for explaining how these purchases are the result of who bid for Linda to submit when she submits her reimbursements. And then I just, in my report, I reminded everyone of what what our ask was and what the things we're asking for, but we don't need to go over it again. The digitization grant, there's really nothing new, but the deadline for having everything done is November one in order to get the reimbursement. And I know that um Julie hired Temp Help uh to get her portion of the work done. And that Temp Help is being fully covered by the grant funding. Um the Pownell Parks and Rec has applied for a Spark Grant. Um I believe it was a approximately sixteen hundred dollars is what we asked for. For the purpose of setting up a temporary ice skating rink on the old tennis court. So we budgeted for a rink kit that can be reused in future years. A portable water tank for smoothing the ice, brooms, shovels, and materials for fire pits. Um the B C R C just sent out a list of the next rounds of ec- round of economic recovery grants. So starting next week, I'm gonna really start re- spending some time researching those to see if we might qualify for anything there. But um as of the last one. I I guess we'll we'll see, I'll see what's available and we'll look at if we qualify or not. Um and then I just wanted to talk really briefly about something, uh Linda and I have been talking about this. And it's something that we're experiencing as we work on these grants, and that is the actual implementing of grants. So I think a lot of people think, oh, there's all this free money out there, go get it, go get it. Um and so we've been doing that and we're, you know, we're we're getting some great resources. However, I am seeing evidence of our lack of capacity. Um because there's only so many hours of the day where we don't have a large staff. We have a one-room town hall where people are only being able to be there half part-time. And so we are finding a bit of a struggle actually facilitating the back ends of these grants. And so ongoing, I think, when we go and apply for a grant, we really have to talk about what that's gonna look like on the other side. And do we even have the ability with what we have now to to implement it, does that make sense? So that's it for grants, did anyone have anything for me there?
Uh not for you, but uh I did have a, just a comment on it, I mean, that also equates to cost. And that's something that uh we always look at, I know we do, um but I wanna just point that out. Is that even though um even though you can get a grant and you may get it matching funds up to a certain amount. Um if it creates an ongoing cost to maintain or even to implement, that that has to be considered also. And I know we, and that's kind of the uh, that, but that's always a caution with grants, they, it it, just as Rebecca was saying, it always looks like free money. Uh but but the costs aren't just, aren't just upfront in what you pay.
And it's not just the cost, because that is a really big consideration, right? Um but it is also, as I said, the the man hours.
Plus, additional workload, I I was just going beyond that, right, it's the additional wor- Order to implement the grant, but then also to maintain it, we have to look at it year over year. It creates a a a larger infrastructure requirement even after you're, even after you reach steady state.
Correct, and so they're really, we have to constantly have these conversations, I think, to talk about what is Pownell truly have the capacity for. How far do we wanna push ourselves in in terms of? Cause these new resources cause us to expand, right? And do we want that expansion? And that's, that has to be, I believe, at the center of all of our conversations around this, which is why I've tried to go after grants that really don't have a huge burden on the backend for us. Like, for instance, the cultural facility is one that we just got, that would have just taken a chunk of money off our town hall project, it would have been great, you know? Um but some of the, some of the other ones, as Bob said, yes, we have to just look at all of these aspects. Um, okay. So next is a quick update on the town hall project. So last week, um I compiled and Linda shipped all of our drawings from preferred builders stamped by the architect. And also all of the adjusted engineering drawings, because adjustments were needed based on the changes the architect had to make, to make sure all the code was covered. So all changes made to the plans were pre-cleared with fire and safety, so I anticipate absolutely no issues getting our building permits. Um he stated he was reviewing everything starting this week and our application fee was paid last year. So Fire and Safety told us we had to increase our fee to them because of the added expense of the architect. But once I explained that the cost was being covered, um as a backend reimbursement from preferred builders, they're good with it. So there's no extra fees required, we already paid the fee last year for all these permits. Um I'm, what was that? Okay, great, okay. I am presently working with Linda on a project to quantify all numbers for all aspects of this project. We brought on Joyce Held from the Pownell Historical Society to help Pauline gather documentation for everything. And we also brought on Tom Shuey, this was Linda, uh Linda's idea, and I, it's really been very helpful. To help from his experience as a builder and he's just helping us put everything into a spreadsheet, he's just volunteered to help us. Um and to make sure we're asking all the relevant questions as we go through this process. You know, Linda and I, we're not builders, so um to have those extra voices as we're kind of coming to this, you know, last mile in the race kind of thing is really helpful to us, so we hope to have this prepared in the next week or two. And at this point, uh we're looking at April one as a groundbreaking. Anyone, so anything there? Right. Fundraising for the Center Street Historical Preservation Grant that we've applied for, the church is hosting a harvest fair this Sunday from eleven A M to four P M. There's gonna be a tag sale, goodie bags for the kids, a fall photo op set up for family pictures. And also a bake sale table set up by the Pownell Regulators. And all proceeds are going towards the wo- work of replacing the roof, repair of the siding, and the new paint. Um the fifty percent portion um of the grant. In the next couple of weeks, we're gonna create the scrapbook and um also, I, actually, I wrote this report and I have an update since I wrote this report, I actually was, Ellen told me that um. She can set up an account if you approve her to do so, to collect all donations towards the historical preservation work. Um and so I, the request for actions, I'd like to ask the board to approve our treasurer to set up an account where donation monies can be held for this project.
I make motion that we set up an account, have uh our treasurer set up an account uh for this project.
Any discussion? Jamie? Ronnie? Angie I.
Okay, very, very good news, I heard from the Bonadillo Group today. And Joseph Rue, our auditor, is finalizing this audit of fiscal year two thousand nineteen. So he first sends his report to, he said Q C, I'm assuming that's quality control at his uh, the, probably the the corporate office, and then it comes to us as a final report. And I should either have the final report itself or a date for its arrival by the next meeting. And then my last thing was, I had a request for you guys and I already sent you information on it, but I'm asking the board to consider allowing me to use some of the staff training funds towards a program I'm enrolled at, at Champlain College, it's an, it's Champlain College is actually, their program's really well-known for mediation training. And their mediation basics course um is pretty comprehensive and it's geared to be sta- a standalone class for people that work where they have to use mediation skills all the time. And I think you guys all can see that probably I'd say eighty to eighty-five percent of what I do for the town is essentially mediation. Um and so, um I am committed to, I'm enrolled, I'm doing this program no matter what, I'm gonna see it all the way through and hopefully get the professional certification in the end. Um but I'm asking that the board might consider supporting a portion of um the basic training workshop from, um, cause we have training money available for us. And I put in a description of the course. And. All of that.
Okay, then we all know what that specifically is. Alright.
We don't have, we need to, as we go forward in the future, to to actually have a separate line item that's specific to whatever committee for training for whatever um department.
Okay.
If you, if you can't decide on it now because you don't have the numbers or whatever, then I, I mean, as I said, I am, I've I've enrolled myself. This is my own choice, cause I really would like to have this training. Also, if I complete the training, um as I go, it it has the potential of being able to save the town um money in legal fees. So if you have a good mediator, someone who's good at mediation, it prevents legal fees, I think we've already experienced this. Um and I also just wanted you to consider, I think you know I've worked a lot of unbilled hours. And so I just ask for you to take that into consideration if you consider supporting a portion of this training for me.
There would, there would be money in the select board expenses to cover these. There would be.
Um it is, it it it's, it's a reduction of eleven hundred down to nine hundred dollars, and I know that.
Right, and I, and I divided it up into payments, so I don't, you know, I'm not, I hate asking for things, so I'm, I would, I would be really happy with one of those payments covered by the, you know, with support with one of the payments.
I was thinking.
Um yeah, I was thinking more like half, so. So uh I was, um, I'll make a motion that we cover half of the cost, which would be four hundred and fifty dollars.
A second.
Does anybody wanna argue for full?
Any discussion?
I just didn't know what we were gonna do before we found out how much we had.
There, there would be enough.
Alright, so no further discussion? Jamie? Bob? Ronnie? Angie I, thank you very much, Rebecca.
I really appreciate it, guys, is there anything else you need from me before I mute mute myself? And nothing else for me?
I can't think of anything, ma'am.
Okay, I'm muting, bye.
Alright. Treasurer's report, Ellen wants me to treasurer's report, I hope I can see this and read this. Alright. This is um from Ellen, number one, first third quarter reports for prepared for the state unemployment comp, B M E R S nine forty-one and I R S. F Y nineteen audit started February twenty twenty. All approvals from July one to August thirtieth twenty twenty completed and signed off by Chair of the Select Board. Budget adjustments completed for F Y twenty. Working on closure of F Y two nineteen audit in September two twenty twenty. Gathering information for F Y twenty twenty audit. Work with listers in preparation for twenty twenty tax bills. Spreadsheet for twenty twenty tax rate, so select board can set tax rate for twenty twenty. Printed and mailed twenty twenty tax bills. Collection of current tax taxes in September. Working with um. Malasan on state B M E R S audit. The state contracted firm to do an audit on municipal and teachers retirement. Daily activities required of treasurer. She says, I have not invested town monies to the date, as spending is not predictable at this time to lock money into C D or any other investment. So that was Ellen's report. And then she also has this reminder for um paying your taxes in the town office due to covert. October tax payments are to be put in the drop box on the front door. Leave bill in and check together and I will mail you receipt. November second through the sixth and November ninth through the tenth, I will be in the office from twelve to five. Saturday, November seventh, I will be here from nine to twelve. Knock on the door, no entry as office is closed to the public. Please wear a mask for everyone's safety, thank you for your cooperation, Ellen Stromeyer, treasurer. Linda, do you have anything to add to that, hon? Okay. Moving on to new business, discussion appointment of deputy health officer. So that pertains to you, Leo, so what would you like to say?
Okay, um, as you know, a while back, we had the uh issue with the racetrack and um back when this all came about and I was, after I was appointed and went through all my trainings, I come to the conclusion that with vacations um uh other commitments that I have, you know, family stuff, that there's times that I'm not gonna be available. And um there's times that the town actually needs a a deputy health officer to stand in and take care of issues. And unfortunately, as I brought this up, Linda, the day before my last employ- uh deployment, um the racetrack caught fire the very next day. And uh it was actually on my agenda to come here and ask for deputy health officer uh prior to that. Um so basically, I think that, you know, in the past, the select board has uh appointed one uh when we didn't have a health officer. Uh I don't know how you feel about appointing another or how you would like to go about appointing another hel- uh deputy health officer at this point in the week.
Well, my understanding now is like what happened with the racetrack, because you were gone, the board on an athlete steps in and the chair becomes the health officer to make any decision, whatever. So. I don't know, do, does the board think that we need a deputy?
Um before we did a deputy health officer, and this is from memory, so I may be wrong, so I'm looking for somebody to correct. I- i- if I, if I remember it right, it was because we didn't have a health officer for a while. We appointed a deputy health officer who was in effect our acting health officer. And there was a payment associated with it, it was, it was a a monthly payment that 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 kept him going. So I I I mean, it was, it was the standard stipend, I forgot what it was, it was a couple hundred bucks a month. Two or three hundred, if I remember right. Um but uh so um um, did things like the racetrack, I think are gonna be exception circumstances, and I don't wanna be in a position where we're paying two health officers in order to have a deputy.
Well, let's, let's stop in front right there. Today, our health officer, our current health officer has not charged the town in any way with services provided to the town.
Okay.
Okay. And and I, I actually don't have an intention of of charging the the town. However, um I do feel at times that we do need, you know, I get, I get multiple cases hitting me at once in the try and jungle, you know, so many cases at one time with so many different legal a- actions. It's, you know, it's a lot easier if I could have somebody else, I can say, hey, listen, just go handle this case and uh take care of this and, you know, consult. Um I'd be, I'd actually be willing to give up my my stipend and uh uh that is allotted for me and uh any hours that he works to be pulled off of that.
Do you have anybody in mind?
I do. I do, and I did. Well, that's what I, that was, the other thing is, I didn't know if you wanted to, how you wanted to.
Didn't know, and your position as health officer, can you? Can you appoint someone? As an assistant?
I don't know if I personally can do that or if it has to be approved, uh let me check with the state.
I think we should check with the state.
And see what they say.
And be L C T and do some more investigation before we make any decision tonight. I mean, I wanna certainly help you in any way that we can, but I also wanna make sure that it's the right way and that everybody has a fair chance at.
And I understand that, yeah, yeah. My, 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 my thing was just, you know, like the deal with being caught up in the, and on the, the chair automatically becomes the health officer of my absence. But the thing about it is, is, you know, if you have a new chair and they know nothing about the rules of the, the process of this, that this might.
And we did a lot of investigating and we got from our lawyer and from B L C T and Rebecca helped us, so it wasn't like we just cause I personally didn't know what I needed to do until we got all that information. And I understand where you're coming from, but I also wanna make sure that we do it properly. So can you um find out?
I will find out and I'll, I'll come back and then get back to the board. The answers.
Okay. Yes, absolutely, does anybody have any other suggestion or discussion that they would like to discuss about this? Okay, I'm just asking, I didn't wanna make sure that everybody had a chance.
Um, well, just a, just a couple of the questions. And sorry, I'm just ignorant. We did, um, you don't get paid by the town.
Well. I have not put in for anything from the town. Um. I just, I I've, I haven't felt the need to, so. I could build the town, actually, because I'm not considering employee.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm considered like an independent contractor. And I just had an agreement with the town saying, okay, well, then I'll charge you three thousand dollars a year that we, we help us. And that's basically what's carried on through the past, however.
So what is your stipend?
That is the stipend.
The three thousand dollars?
The three thousand dollars, yes.
Alright, that, that, that was my only question, I just uh uh didn't quite understand that. Uh I, cause I was pretty sure in the past it came out of the town's pocket. But here, it it would be, but you're just not taking it.
Correct, okay.
Okay, that makes sense now, anything else? Well, okay, thank you very much, Leo.
Thanks.
Alright, moving on to um award the fuel bid. I had that, what did I do with that? So Joel sent me this, I hope everybody got it and read it. Alright, so um this year's few bids were opened and although both was um cheaper by three cents over rack price, both, but John Ray was point oh four cents cheaper on the day of the bidding. John Ray was point twenty-three cents over rack and Bo was twenty cents. We've had good luck with John Ray's fuel and services, so I would recommend staying with John Ray this year. I understand that the rack price gets very confusing, dealing with gas, that's why when people don't understand why a gas price can go up fifteen cents in a day or down twenty cents in a day, the rack is unbelievable, it's worse than the sack market. So I understand what he's saying, if other people don't understand, it's very, very confusing. So anyways, he recommends to stay with um John Ray's fuel because of the services that they've had and good standing through the years. So that's what he's recommending.
I motion we award to John Ray for recommendation.
Any further discussion? Jamie? Bob? Ronnie? Angie I. Okay. Execute um contract for the better roads grant, B R O eight one two for eighteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. T H forty-four for chrome road. So this is a stone line ditch, correct? So can I have a motion? Have a second? Any discussion? Jamie? Bob? Ronnie? Angie I. So I have to just sign it, Linda? Alright. Approval excess weight permit for Tatro trucking LLC. Approval access weight permit for Pedro Trucking LLC. That's the only one, yep. I had it here somewhere on my nose. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Wow, we did that really fast, people. Alright, we're gonna go to public comments.
There is only one member of the um, public here and they do not have their hand raised.
Okay, just one second, Rebecca.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Julie left me this, this is the cost of the special election for October thirteenth for ATV. I just wanted to read this for her. County ballots were one thousand one hundred and four, defective were eleven. Final count was one thousand ninety-three. She mailed out seven hundred and sixty-five absent ballots, ballots, six hundred and fifty-four were returned. Twenty-two people voted in the office and four hundred and twenty-eight people voted at the polls. Um, she's got the cost all broken down if anybody wants to know, but the total cost is one thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. And this doesn't cover the amount of hours that she put into the election reading the envelopes and counting. She's gonna keep the cost down. I guess she's not gonna charge us.
Yeah, that's how I read that.
That's how I read that, that she's not gonna charge us. Thank you very much, Julie, for all your hard work. We really do appreciate it. Thank you so much, okay.
Can I add something to that really quickly? Because I was there for the polls. And I just wanna say that according to many people there, a lot of people registered to vote for the first time. And I just think that's a really exciting outcome.
Yes.
Um. Anyway, I just wanted to pass that on in case people didn't know that a lot, a lot of people that have never voted before registered uh, for this election. And they're now registered voters.
Excellent.
And hopefully they'll carry it through to voting in elections.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Alright, thank you, Rebecca. So now open up to public comment. Is there anybody out there? Please raise your hand.
So there's only one member of the public here and they do not have their hand raised.
Okay. So then we need to go into executive session for legal for the Green Mountain Racetrack. And as far as I understand, we are not gonna be taking any action. And for some reason, if we have to take action, we will do it at our next regular select board meeting. So can I have a motion to go in executive session, please? Uh, Ronnie? Or I mean, I'm looking at Jamie's name, Ronnie, Jamie? Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Going into executive session, please.